A copy of the meeting for May eighth, twenty nine, three, and now session in following meeting, copy of draft minutes on April tenth and April eighteenth, meeting to have posted on the city website. Committee reports have been posted on the city website. We have two communications in reverse here. That we will hear in season ninety. And we shall start department reports with the fire department represented tonight by the bureau.
I draw up vacation. Report for the month. From April first to April thirtieth, there are large number of calls, I think, in just over six years I've been chief, we had some thirteen calls for the month. Don't worry, we've already reached that this month. We had one, one vehicle fire. One accident, three power line downs, a couple of water problems. Six false calls for a total of thirteen, so pretty easy month for the year. We're at one hundred and twenty-one calls as of the thirtieth, not including the ten I think we're already at. That's the report for that. I know everybody's seen the local laws that were put out in reference to our department that we requested. All anybody who's got any questions? Do that, I can answer.
Yeah, actually, you said it's three miles. You can get volunteers up to three miles.
So what this does is allows the chief and the two assistants to live three miles outside the city.
But not the volunteers.
They, they can already, right now it's written that the chief must live in the city. One of the two assistants can live one mile outside the city and the other assistant has to live within the city. So we asked to change it for all three chiefs to live three road miles, not linear miles, three road miles from the nearest city boundary. The only thing that wasn't in here, I had talked to the attorney about it earlier, was the line officers should be five miles to change. Okay, I didn't get the updated, five miles from the city boundary. I think that one might read three now. So that's it. And then there's some wording. And then it'll be, we have one other one that we're still working on with the attorney in relation to open burns. Probably in the city. We, we have a meeting, our administration has a meeting that we're going to go over it and kind of tweak some things before we give it back to her for more review. So.
Is that something, Tom, that we would be able to vote on next week or do we have to come here before post?
No, I think we could vote on it next week.
Because when this came up in legal, the reason we said just take it directly here
Right.
was because Memorial Day is pretty much the start of the after cooking that is our season.
Right.
So rather than delaying it a month, I'm waiting for it to come to legal.
Yeah, we, we, I don't know if we're going to have that done by next week. Sean, the chief, is out of town. He's on vacation with his family. He doesn't come back till next Sunday. So we want to sit down with Craig as code enforcement as well as the three current chiefs. And we have three patch chiefs, commissioner, and two patch chiefs on our committee that's doing all of our policies and procedures over, and that's where all this started. So I don't think we're going to get it done by, by next week. So I think we have a meeting set for the seventeenth. I could be wrong. So, but as soon as we have that, we'll get it back to, to the attorney for review. As we've been talking about, and I think Heather, I spoke with Heather, she was going to bring it up. In her report, I told her I was going to bring up my report as well. We received a proposal for the new engine rescue with the dealer that we've been working with. So the proposed price for the new truck is one million forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. That's what everything delivered to us in over two years. So that would be to order it. There's no money down. There's no money out of pocket until we take full delivery, which would be sometime two thousand, the time in two thousand twenty-five, we can get it ordered. So if anybody wants to see any, anything about the truck, I have the whole book right here with photos. And that was, that'd be purchased off of a source well purchasing, which is the same that we did with the ladder truck two years ago.
And it's two years, roughly turnaround, right?
It's two years from signed authorization. And then usually the pre-build is within a month. So it's, it's probably twenty-four to thirty months realistically, because we have to then do pre-build. Now to get all our guys together and sitting down for two days with the engineers to make sure everything's done correctly. So. And then again, I, I know we're, we've talked about the building selling, but just to purpose involved that we're going to be out for at this point, two summers without a vote. On the flip side, the ladder truck sold.
Yeah, nice.
The date with the place?
Dayton, Ohio.
And you got your asking price.
Yep.
Good.
That has to, the POs, they're going to speak with the PO Wednesday night. So we're open to have a chat next week. And then they have forty-five days to come to pick it up. So.
Great.
But it has been stripped out. They were here. They were very, very, very pleased with everything in the department, including, they have very nice things to say about our department, including the, you know, the city condition. But everything, they were thoroughly impressed with it. So they're looking forward to it, to put it to work to over five hundred calls a month. Not a year, five hundred calls a month out of the stations going to go into. So they're looking forward to it.
She was actually, Linda, that has her hand up. Is there a problem with that? Oh, that was your. Thanks, Nick. Anything else? Any questions for Nick from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Oh, Heather, Heather. Oh, Heather.
Hi, I just said I had a question. It's something we haven't covered yet, Nick. With the purchase of the new truck that we were just discussing, does that mean that there will be a vehicle that can be put out to pasture and sold, much like we're selling the ladder truck now?
Yeah, yeah. It would be two seven nine, which is the two thousand and six rescue pumper that we have. It's the only one left that's got white, that's white or red painted.
Yep.
Believe it or not, we've actually kind of put some feelers out there. We actually had somebody already said they wanted to come and look at it because that's about their timeframe.
That's great.
Not to be like, jump the gun, but one of the most is actually in the market for one. And we kind of said, hey, we're looking to buy a new one. And they were like, can we come look at that? I said, absolutely. So, but yes, that would, that would then go up for sale.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Nick. Is Nia, I don't see Nia on the board. We'll try to come back to her if she arrives. But we will skip ahead to the youth department. Represented by one only Liz York.
Non-hockey boss, extra mayor. That was fantastic.
I took a close, so my bad. All right. Thrust start as usual with programs. So we're winding down to the end of the year. However, we still have a lot of programming going on. Our school, Columbia County, still with us, Spinal Stiff Circus, Hudson Hall, Claremont, Beautiful Racket, Sylvia Center. All of those programmers are still coming to us weekly. We're having themed activities in the gym now so that it's a little bit more structured and educational. So the kids are learning new games. They'll come in and be like, what is that game? And then they'll have the best time of their lives. So. Yeah, it gets pretty serious with the competition, as some of you can speak to. But it's been a lot of fun having it up there. And so just some photos of what's going on. More to say about team programming this week than usual, this month than usual. Team programming has really increased over the past few weeks. We're actually averaging twenty-five to thirty kids each night. Closer to the thirty and up now, as the weeks go on, it's getting higher. And we've got some programming going on. Sylvia Center that was working with the after-school program with the younger kids has come in to do a cooking program with the older kids. They're just trying out four weeks right now. It's hard to get the older kids to engage in programming. But last week they came and they brought some snacks and met the kids and asked them what they wanted to learn how to cook. And they got some ideas. So it seems like the kids are really interested in that. So hopefully there's that, they remember, you know, as the weeks go on, that they want to be there for that. So that can be really cool. We still have Rebecca Borer coming in and offering programs with Sound Lab and, you know, writing, creating songs. And we've had so many kids in the gym that the staff have had to create a schedule for the basketball. So they're doing like mini tournaments. They've got the scoreboard out and one of the staff's actually wrapping games. So it's been pretty fun up there. And then the photos that are here are actually photos that were taken by one of our team programmers. So she saw we had the camera after after-school program and asked if she could use it and took a bunch of photos. So that was really cool. And she got some really great shots in here. So want to share those. A quick update on summer camp. We're about a hundred kids registered so far. We still have some space left. However, we have closed registration for the five to six-year-olds. Statistically, those are the kids that actually do show up every day, you know, the older kids. There's a lot of vacation or other activities. But five to six shows up every day. So we've closed it. You know, there are some families that register every summer that haven't registered yet. So we're going to be reaching out to them. But if you have a five or six-year-old that you want to get registered, you'll have to call directly to the signer so we can see if we have space for them. Other than that, all the other age groups are still open. Still just scan the code. I know it's written into our page for you to register. If the code scan secure doesn't work, you can just go right to the website or call us at the center. A couple of updates for Oakdale. We had the rewilding event last weekend. It got rained out the weekend before. A lot of stuff was planted and cleaned up. I was unable to make it through the prior commitments, but the group had a lot of fun, got a lot of work. We got some donations that were gotten for us by Mr. Wallace. And I think those all got planted as well. So, yeah, it's.
Went by because I didn't know when it though, like I think the two distinct, was it like a bunch of little shrubs?
Vanessa opened it without me, so I don't have. Yeah. They were excited. And so, and it's looking really good over there. If you guys haven't gotten a chance to get so early yet this season, the weather's been great. So get over there if you can. Another thing that happened this weekend that not a lot of people went to, so we're going to try and do it again, is the sound mapping at Oakdale Lake. So this is really cool. It's an activity on the walking trail. There's QR codes put up. Last summer at Oakdale Camp, we had Sarah Van Buren come in through Beautiful Racket, and she did activities with the kids and some of the counselors as well, which I'll go into on the next page. Where they kind of walked through the woods, they recorded what they saw, they talked about camps, they talked about what they were hearing and seeing, and they made these beautiful recordings of then she works for a long time on putting together as a single recording. It actually played on the local radio station on the last day of camp last year. It was beautiful. If you haven't gotten a chance to listen to it, I highly recommend it. It was also very cathartic at the end of the stressful summer to hear that. And it was, you know, so nice. Well, they did have fun. It was a really sweet experience. But you can access this on our websites if you want. There's a link there. There's also a link, I believe, on the CLC website because along with Beautiful Racket and Sarah Van Buren, Friends of Hudson Youth also had to put this together along with Jennifer Rosette, who works for the Columbia Land Conservancy. If you did the technology part that I don't understand, she put that together for us. So just to speak a little bit more about it, I took this from what Jennifer wrote about it. So the sound walking was an outdoor program offered by a local creative arts organization, Beautiful Racket, taught by Sarah Van Buren and led, held at the Oakdale Day Camp in the summer of two thousand twenty-two. It encouraged campers to explore Oakdale soundscape, incorporating elements of deep listening, build recording, and naturalism. The younger campers kept a sound journal to record sound and listening observations. And our counselors, Ellis Richardson and Jay Sean Williams, recorded sound-related interviews with the kids. Those are really sweet. And the older campers learned how to feel, how to make field recordings using Zoom audio recorders and smartphones and spent time recording all over the camp. So they were on the beach and on the basketball courts. They were in their areas, they're on the trails. And it's, it is a rather long piece. But I think you get to listen to snippets of it on the trails. You don't have to listen to the whole thing. But beautiful weather and beautiful recording. You can get on that road too and do that. I encourage you to do so. Um, and community engagements this weekend, there were the community chess tournament at the youth center. It was put together by supervisor of Deuce. Mia? Mia? Okay, sorry. And he worked with Tyrone Hatchet, who works at the youth center. They organized the chess tournament and drew participants from all over the Northeast. A really great experience. You can see here some of the games, there's photo of the hosts and the donors and all the winners. And it was really lovely. We're just glad to provide the space for them. Hopefully we can keep doing events like that. We also had the professional arts group that does the Mad Hatter Parade come in and work with our kids after school to do art projects to build hats for the parade. They were there Thursday and Friday, and then they opened the space on Saturday to the community to come in. The kids really loved it. Some kids made like four or five hats. So if you need a hat and you didn't have time to make one, I'm sure we can lend you one. The parade is actually this Saturday. It's the thirteenth on Saturday, right? And it starts at two P M. at the Hudson Library. So you still have time to make a hat or you can come to the center and ask to borrow one from one of the kids. Oh, we hired a secretary finally. She seems to be a really great fit, lots of experience, really excited to have her. But we are, however, still hiring for our food and nutrition coordinator. Calvin and I are doing a lot of the cooking, so the kids would really love it if we could find someone who's specific to that role. I struggle to feed myself sometimes. So feeding like, you know, eighty kids is a lot. So if you know anyone, just have them reach out. The person is responsible for purchasing food supplies, creating snacks and meals each day for after-school ante and programming. And they also work with like local farms and local organizations to source food and programming. So we are no longer accepting applicants for camp counselors. We had about forty applicants for about twenty. And so we're about to we're breaking a few parts with our hiring, but we're really excited. We're going to encourage them to, you know, apply at Kite Snaps and other local organizations if they don't make it with us. But we're always hiring lifeguards. So if you know any lifeguards, any swimmers, anybody who's just interested, we're in one training starting next week, and then we're going to do another training in June. We have about I think fifteen lifeguards that apply. But you know, a lot of the kids that do lifeguarding are very actively engaged in other activities, like sports and not always available all the time. So the more guards you can get, the better. And Friends of Hudson Youth will pay for that training for any guard that is then going to work at Oakdale. So if you know someone who do that, might be intimidating for them, let them know that that will be covered.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council?
This with the, with the forty applicants, when you prioritize them, is ready?
We're first prioritizing return staff.
For what?
Yeah. And then I don't think we, I think we only have a couple of kids that are out of the district honestly. So I'm definitely Hudson City School District.
But now Hudson resident, Hudson resident.
I'm never looking at it through that ones yet, because so many of them are just from this community.
I, that used, used to be a policy, though. I don't know where it went, but that used to be a policy. That we, some of you were hired in city residents, you had to have a city residence tag.
I mean, for us too, a lot of families being displaced, but you know, the price of living right in the city, we're looking at families that are from the community historically, you know, in general, you know, just trying to keep those families engaged as much as we can, even though they can't live in the city anymore.
Yeah. What's the maximum capacity of summer jam?
So we're trying to keep it the max of like thirty in each age group. So that would be about one twenty. It's really difficult because some people sign up and their kids can only come for four instead of six weeks. And some people sign up and they're only going to come on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So we all have allowed like, I think we had like a hundred and eighty kids sign up last year. We still kept the numbers around. It was around twenty-five each day for each group. So we're stopping it. For the younger kids, we are stopping it closer. We stopped at thirty so we can allow a few more kids to apply. But the older kids will allow a little bit more people to apply because they don't really show up as much. So.
Anyone else?
Yeah. This is the first year you can use me for the elementary student.
Yes, this is the first year we will not stop the clothes at all. Yeah, we're pretty excited. And we're going to go for the area that the school is going to let us use tomorrow so that we can make our plan about how to use it efficiently.
Great. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Your public comment? Yeah, next is Heather. Are you here, Heather? Yes, she's here.
I am. Let me just share my screen. Sorry, bear with me here. Okay. Start here up at the beginning. Sorry. Sorry, I'm having a bit of a problem here. Bear with me. Okay. Does that say treasures agenda on top now?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's a good start.
You're doing a great job, Heather.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the positive encouragement. Um, so twenty twenty-three budget actuals through April. Again, it's a little early to have any of sort of the big numbers. By next month, we will definitely have the first half of mortgage tax recording. We may or may not have the sales tax. So right now we're just looking at some of the basics. And they're, they're all looking pretty good. So you can see here for parking revenues. At this point, we're at thirty-three percent of the year has gone by. So we're at twenty-six percent of budget on, on an off-street parking. Forty-three percent front street municipal lot. Again, that was taken down a bit because of the impact that COVID had. So it's great to see that rebounding. Parking and other permits, permits are doing well there. Fifty-one percent of the total budgeted amount. And parking tickets still coming in, in pretty well, but not quite as strong at eighty-two. But overall, for those four parking revenue items combined, we're pretty much at budget through the first four months of the year. So that's great. Building permits and fees. Again, roughly the same, a few points off, but you know, we're a little ahead of the game on plumbing permits, but that's obviously on a much smaller base. Building permits were currently at twenty-six percent. But there are a number of things happening in the city. And so I anticipate that number is going to continue to climb. So Nick mentioned the rescue pumper truck. So a million forty-nine five, that was a quote that came out a few weeks ago, I would say. I think it was good for forty-five days. As he mentioned, I pulled this from the quote. He said it could be two years up to five or six months. It's definitely going to be at least two years. Their quote was two years to two months. And also, as he mentioned, we do have a sale for the old ladder truck. The resolution authorizing that sale back in the day indicated that that would be set aside for future fire department purchases. So that amount will go toward offsetting this, assuming that both the BEA and the common council approve the purchase. Tom and Kamal and I have had initial discussions about not just putting that money in the reserve, but possibly given the relative strength of our twenty twenty-two performance, potentially adding some additional money into the reserve, either through a budget amendment or through the budget in twenty twenty-four. Obviously, the more that we can put in without causing, you know, any financial harm to the city, the better it is because it reduces the amount we have to borrow. And unfortunately, as you all probably know in your personal lives, interest rates have been going up. That is not that it's also the case, you know, in the federal mini markets. So but all of those are TBD to be discussed. We will, however, have a bond resolution for next week's meeting that you guys can discuss in terms, and then as well as, you know, a purchase authorization resolution. And you guys can discuss that, but you obviously can't authorize the purchase without having the funds appropriated in some manner. And a bond resolution is considered a fund appropriation. So my goal is to have that to you for next week's meeting. On what you choose to do with it is obviously up to you. And I'm obviously happy to discuss either during this meeting, the next meeting, or individually during the next week, what the impact of that might be. The next thing you're going to see is a bond resolution for the ADA, C Hall improvements. As you know, those are underway. As you know, we all approved entering into the contract. I missed something personally. I missed it in the bond resolution. I knew that the bond resolution had a maximum borrowing amount, which is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We also knew we had a reserve of a little under four hundred thousand dollars remaining. And so that contract fit well, very well into that financial frame. However, technically, the bond resolution does indicate a maximum project cost as well as a maximum borrowing cost. So we just need to amend the resolution to increase the project costs to represent the real project cost. So it doesn't have any impact in terms of all the financing that you've seen. It still falls within combination of the reserve and the authorized borrowing. But technically, we need to change that project cost amount to reflect reality. Given the fact that we were doing that anyway, I reached out to Peter and Michael Hoffman, and we met last week. Because not surprisingly, as happens in every capital project, find things that you weren't expecting, especially in an old building like City Hall. So as you know, we've, we've approved a few change orders. All well within reason. The purpose of the discussion was to kind of say, hey, do we have a sense of what else we might be uncovering slash discovering? We have about seventy-two thousand dollars left out of the, the currently existing funds of the reserve and the maximum borrowing capability. Peter is working with the contractors to determine whether or not we think that's going to be enough. He also did a, a different type of analysis where we kind of said, okay, often in capital projects, you budget twenty percent for change orders. And that number came into more about ninety-five as opposed to seventy-two. So I know, and Peter may want to chime in on this, he was going to get some information, he thought today, about one outstanding change order that we know for sure is going to be coming in, having to do with reworking of electrical boxes and wiring. So we may or may not recommend, after we all discuss and review those numbers again, we may recommend to increase the project costs by an additional twenty thousand dollars or so, if we think it's necessary, given what the change orders look like. But the recommendation, and, and Tom and Kamal and I have also chatted on this via email, would be that whatever the additional is, we would contribute it from the general fund as opposed to increasing the amount that we borrow. And again, that ties back to the fact that twenty twenty-two is looking relatively, relatively good right now. So we should be putting whatever excess funds we have to a good cause like this to reduce our expenditures going forward. And again, you should see those at next week's meeting as well. One other resolution, which we may or may not have for next week, includes, is for the NIPA project, which is the swapping out the LEDs and the streetlights and the city taking ownership of that. That resolution's going to be slightly different from a funding standpoint because we have the opportunity to either take it to market via bond or potentially fund it through NIPA itself, which has its own financing arm. That's going to require obviously a financial analysis of which one is obviously better for the city and better for the taxpayers. But it just means. But it just means that it's it's a slightly different legal type of resolution that our bond council will provide for us. And then the last thing in terms of resolutions has nothing to do with capital projects, really. But we are hopefully going to get in front of you for next week, a resolution that would just authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for Springbook, which is our financial software technology company. The IT group said it all this last year. The the twenty-twenty-three budget has the amounts included in it, so this would really just be a, we're ready to go and get started. Please approve the contract. In terms of financial reporting. So one of the things we have to file every year, some of you that have been around for a while know this. It's called the annual update document, although I believe this is the last date it's going to be called this because New York State has changed it to something else again. But the twenty-twenty-two AUD was filed with New York State on May first, which was the deadline. And it has already been uploaded to the city website under the treasure section in twenty-twenty-two financial documents. The entire document is there. It walks you through, I know ninety-nine percent of what we talk about is the general fund here, but it also covers, you know, cemetery water and sewer funds, the capital funds, the fixed asset accounts, the long-term investment accounts, and covers a lot of other things. So it's it's an interesting read. If you all are ever interested in getting a sort of a summary presentation of it, I would be happy to do that. I did affix that nine pages to the end of this just for the general fund, a fund that shows you the performance. So I included both the balance sheet and the revenue and expenditure lines. We talked about it a little bit last month, and it it's coming in as well, if not slightly better than I projected last month. This is, of course, all pre-audit. I just want to make sure that's clear. So while we have a fee accountant through the the information, we won't, you know, it it really takes the auditors come in and make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. But I'm pretty pretty comfortable with with where I think the numbers are, and I think they're accurate. Twenty twenty-one audit. Yeah, shockingly, we still don't have it in hand. They are doing one final review and it should be issued. That leads to the, okay, well, let me just finish the financial reporting session. So as you all know, we issued a ban in twenty-twenty-one. We reissued, which is a bond anticipation, or which is a form of short-term borrowing, and we borrowed it for all sorts of things, including a water main capital project on Washington Street, an improvement to the sewer separation on Front Street. We included the ladder truck in there, and even though that could have been financed long-term, but the the total dollar amount wasn't big enough to make that big of an impact on the bond market. And a few other things, we reissued the ban in twenty-twenty-two and added a number of other projects, including a couple of DRI projects. Those would never go into bond because they're supposed to be reimbursed one hundred percent, so they require short-term financing until we actually get the projects complete and get the reimbursements from the state. But we do, however, have, I believe, and I'm going to be confirming that this week, but I believe at this point, we have enough projects that are complete that we can move some of them into long-term financing, which would be a bond. And that would be the fire truck, that would be both the wastewater treatment project and the water main line project. And I believe we might even be able to roll the the ADA financing to that, and that should be a pretty attractive amount of bonds for people to want to bid on for for for, you know, municipal investors to want to. So that's basically the deadline for that is, I wanna say, June twenty-second. So that's what we'll be working on for the next, you know, several weeks to make sure we get that as tight as possible. And then operational. We definitely need to engage an auditor for twenty-twenty-two, so I know I've mentioned this a couple of months, so maybe, Tom, I will I will reach out to you offline and see how you want to coordinate that. Okay. And we also have to do a single federal audit for twenty-twenty-two because we incurred seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more of federal funded monies, and that was predominantly through the CBDG grant for the stormwater separation project. So I've actually not been through a single federal audit before. I've already reached out to one of one of the organizations that's audited us in the past and asked if they would give me like, you know, a rundown of it. The audit itself seems relatively straightforward. My my biggest question is, do you audit the project that incurred the amount of money that triggers the audit? Or once, if you've triggered the audit, do you have to audit everything that gets any kind of federal funds regardless of how much they got? And that will obviously make a difference because we did have some other projects that did that did rely on federal funds. So that's that's my next step in figuring out how that goes. Once that goes, then we'll have to put an RFP for that as well, and then a budget amendment, which should hit that project, but we can figure that out later. And that's all I've got, aside from the finances that I I tagged on the end, but I'm not gonna go through them now unless somebody wants me to.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Heather. Questions? Questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Heather.
Got it.
Moving right along, Rob Perry. I see your name. Rob? You're muted. Rob? There you go. You're not muted anymore. Rob? You're muted again.
Oh.
Oh, there you go.
Am I up?
Yes.
Okay, batter up. Sorry, uh, let's see what we got here. Okay. Uh, septic from March was twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Most of what we do in this month is kind of get back to our maintenance schedules, things that we've been waiting to work on over the winter because for obvious reasons, they can't be done in cold weather. So this is our one of our digesters down at the sewer plant, and, you know, this is literally, it's this fine silt. And you can see it's it's just above their knees. These, the blowers are a foot and a half off the ground, and some of them are actually covered. So if they're covered with the silt, they can't blow the air. If the air doesn't go in there, the digester doesn't work. And all this silt is coming from our collection system, either the streets because we don't do street sweeping in the winter, or just from failures in the collection system itself. So. And when it's all done, this is the importance of it because you see the where the blowers are, that get the size even pattern of air distribution. Also, the plant, this is part of the septic receiving station. This is the auger and the muffin monster. And so this is the screen. And this is the auger that goes in. So there's this, there's a fine mesh that goes around the outside wire, and that's what actually takes all the inorganic stuff and carries it and dumps it into a dumpster, so that way we don't pump it, introduce it into our system. And, you know, just some maintenance inside one of the garages. This is, you know, some old check valves that were buried below, you know, years of who knows what. And let's see, so water, this was a hydrant that was replaced on, you know, Montgomery Street. And, you know, when you see these hydrants where the the steamers here and the the two-inch are a little bit higher, those were a style that were, they were considered improved, and they were gonna be kind of the next water fixture of the future. Well, it turned out they had two different metal alloys along the seal and the valve itself. And they would, with the introduction of water, they would seize up and fuse together, making them inoperable. The, at that point, you know, they're really, they have to be replaced. They can't be repaired. So we try to repair where we can, replacement, you know, this this hydrant by itself is twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, you add in all the other fit, the fittings, the pipe, the breakaway, the new valve, you know, it gets, it becomes over three thousand dollars to replace. So we like to repair, you know, we prefer to repair for obvious reasons. The issue is that, you know, sometimes we can get parts. A lot of times we can't, and there's still a lot of supply chain issues out there. Some of the people don't really know is that we actually sell bulk water. There's a five hundred dollar flat fee permit. In this case, they're using the, filling up a tote to be used for the hydro seed at the the new hospital garage. But we've we've sold it to tankers who want to use it for swimming pools. You know, it has to be done with our personnel. It has to be done during regular business hours. Has to be done at, this hydrant is actually behind our water tank. You can see the cemetery back here. But, you know, it is something that's, we do do it. There's a, you know, it's not a huge market, but we we do sell it. Upcoming is the next, this is the two twenty-two-three round of WEA, which is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. And last year, we applied for the same grant to do North Robinson, North Third Street and Robinson Street. And the goal would be that we would replace the water mains with sixty cents on the dollar from the WEA funds, forty percent local from the water fund. And then we would also upgrade the lead service lines in those areas using the lead service line money, like which is a hundred percent reimbursable. And it's basically what we just did on Washington Street last year. It's not uncommon for us to apply for a grant more than once. One reason is we've already done the work. We have the engineering report. We have everything we need for the application, so it's just a redo. But, you know, between last year and this year, last year, we had an open WEA grant. We were in the middle of construction. You know, so those types of things don't score as well as having completed a project and closed it out. So it's not uncommon for us to apply again, and and, you know, hopefully we win it this round. If not, you know, we can look at something else that might be more attractive. The, you know, now the blacktop plan is over. You know, this is a ditch line. It's up along Columbia Turnpike. You're gonna see the guys putting the new blacktop over here on the left. You know, this is, this is kind of cleaned up a little bit of what was failing, but then they come through and actually excavate it, make it, make it a little bit more smooth, and then it's hard to see the the finished product up there. Also, part of the seasonal work is, you know, these are part of emergency water breaks, when we were looking for water in the wintertime that we, you know, we had leaking valves and broken mains. And so we don't do full restoration in the wintertime because we can't. So here, you know, this one's down on North Third Street, and this one's up on North Fifth Street. So you'll see these popping up, you know, anywhere where there was a water break over the winter. What we do is we come in with a thick base of binder and then a top coat, make it flush, and then we open the road. You know, and there's, people do question why we don't do a lot of this work in the wintertime, and there's, you know, there's a couple of reasons. One, without the asphalt plant being open, the only thing we can put on top of a, an excavation is some product called coal patch, which it holds all right, it holds the aggregate together, but it's not really solid. So it does come apart, you know, especially with freezing saw thaw cycles. And of course, if our plows catch it, it has the runs a risk of damaging the plows. So and then, of course, we have to come back in the spring and take the coal patch out with the the aggregate and then replace it anyway. So, you know, if we have to do emergency excavations, that's fine, but we don't do any kind of elective, if you will, during the wintertime because it's just more cost-effective and it runs the risk. Another reason is the water main specifically, the water is very cold, the reservoir is frozen. So the water really doesn't have much of a chance to to warm up, and a lot of this old infrastructure, you know, you know, makes some of the gas gets a little bit more brittle, so we don't want to damage those, you know, try and address one thing and create one problem and make two other ones. And also because we don't flush hydrants in the wintertime for the obvious reasons. If you flush a hydrant when it's twenty degrees outside, then the water that's on the road now creates ice. So the hydrants haven't been flushed since October and November, so you know, it does get, some minerals do build up in it, which can, you know, it's a cosmetic issue. It makes it look a little discolored. It's it's not a health issue at all. But, you know, there's a, so the idea is not disturb the water mains until we've got a chance to flush, which should be sometime this month. The, the seasonal painting of the carrots for the farmer's market, the docks are in. We did a significant portion to replace many of the floats last year. And we've marked a couple other ones that need replacement this year, so you know, we'll order some, you know, later in the year and then switch them out in the wintertime like we did this year. Let's see. Here's the Lafayette sign. It's down in waterfront park. And I don't have the finished product pictures because it wasn't there when they were finished installed yet. But these openings are in the holding cell of the police station. They're for high-power vents. And the idea is to get a lot of air changes in there because some of the people from the park, when they get arrested and and put in custody until they can be arraigned, can be a little ripe. So this is just a way to kind of clean up the environment a little bit inside that area. It's not a really huge area. A little bit of shared services went on to the Village of Philamont Call. There's a ton of Claverick sweeper was down, so we went out to assist them with sweeping some roads during the day out there. So there we are on the end of Prospect Avenue in Philamont. Also, our neighbors in Greenport have an issue with a failed culvert, and there was some some concrete structure that they couldn't reach with their equipment, so we sent our big machine over, yanked it out for them, and then put it in their truck so that they could haul it away. And, you know, town of Greenport will be assisting us tomorrow. There's a, an issue with a sewer main, and they have a high-volume jetter that should do the trick. We we got through it today a little bit, but we're gonna finish it up tomorrow. As far as the Ferry Street Bridge. We have, as I told you last month, we submitted the final plan and specifications estimates to Region Eight. So some of the comments we receive back is we have to add language about the, there's new Buy America legislation that was passed by the federal government because these are federal funds. We went through a similar thing when we had the the six million dollars in Arrow money for constructing the sewer plant, so it's, you know, it is what it is. We've been there before. NEPA, which is the federal version of the of Seeker, that's their environmental review. That's being reviewed by the local projects people. There is a thing called a bridge bat survey, and we've done it twice so far, and we're gonna have to do a third time because it only goes for two years, and since construction will not commence before June. You know, we'll have to do that again. We've had to redo several of the environmental and regulatory stuff just because they they're only good for a couple of years. The rail agreement is under review by the Rail Bureau of DOT. And, you know, we did request three specification changes, and those have been approved by DOT. One was for decorative light poles because they have their standards, and we tried to pick something that mimics what we have currently in the city so that it looks a little bit more. So they did accept that. There was a the prefabricated trust system, you know, a lot of times there's just large sections of bridge that are delivered, and then they pour, form it and pour it in place at the location. We want to move this project along a little quicker, so we're gonna purchase the trust system and, but that's something that needs to be approved on a case-by-case basis, which they have approved. So that's good. So it's a critical component of the actual bridge replacement. And lightweight foamed glass aggregate. And basically, the aggregate that we typically use and everybody uses is stone. In this instance, because particularly the west side, there's really nothing, we're gonna raise this bridge up three feet. Man, there's not a whole lot of mass behind it, so this this aggregate is made from recycled glasses and recycled bottles. It has the same strength and properties of the regular aggregate, but it's eighty-five percent lighter. And it has a high friction value, so it tends, it'll, it holds on better. And so we don't want the friction value because, as like I said, there's not a lot of material on the backside as the, you know, earth works towards the river. And so we don't want the friction value because there's, like I said, there's not a lot of material on the backside as the, you know, earth works towards the river. Uh, and with the, the lighter weight is kind of important because, you know, we're putting all this material behind the original abutment. So we don't want to, you know, over um, it's, you know, I wouldn't say exceed, but we don't want to put more weight than we have to on those old abutments. Uh, they've been, you know, that would, you know, that would be a big issue. And that's uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Rob. Any council members have questions for Rob? Vicky?
Hi, Rob. How are you doing?
Well, thanks.
Um, great job with everything. Um, I was wondering, uh, I had a few complaints, um, including the woman from Oakwood, that uh we're having a hard time finding plumbers. They don't respond. We only have five plumbers. Is there a way we can open a process so we can have more qualified um plumbers in the city?
You got the wrong person. Those are, uh, those are managed by the Board of Plumbers. They're not managed by the Department of Public Works, they're not managed by code enforcement. They're not managed, but you know, by executive. Uh, it's, there's a body called the Board of Plumbers and they decide who is and who is not on that list.
Rob, isn't also true that beyond, they're gonna permit, they just have to go into Craig Hagg's office and pay the proper fee for the project?
No, that's not true at all. You, I think you guys are conflating two separate things. So let's start with number one, Vicky's question, which is, which she's using the word plumbers, which okay, they, they are in fact plumbers, but she's talking about people who dig in the city streets and excavate. And, and that is a significant uh um hurdle to get through because, you know, we can't, we don't have people from, you know, Delaware and New York City or even uh Green County who we have no idea who they are, coming in and digging around all of our utilities, undermining our roads. It's a significant stuff. Um, so that they have, but in order to get to that, that phase, they also have to be a licensed plumber with the Board of Plumbers. So what, what's Vicky's asking was a two-step process as far as being a regular plumber, like going in and fixing your toilet. You know, that's, that's, that's Craig and the Board of Plumbers and that I don't, I don't know how they do that.
Margaret, I, I, I don't know about your neighbors, but one thing that I encountered over the years was a misconception that they have to be Hudson specific plumbers, which is not true. They just gotta be equivalent by the board. So then it might be a broader scope.
Yeah, they're only five of those, so they have to be city plumbers.
You guys are talking about two different things again. There's people who dig with excavators and equipment in the street. That's entirely different than plumbers.
Right. If you're talking about someone doing half sole.
I know, I, I know exactly where this, I had the problem. It was known, oh, house plumbing, the minute you go out of the house, everyone has to be a city plumber. A city plumber though, it's very hard when you only have fire and they don't respond.
There's, there's, there are license, first of all, a, a plumber gets licensed with the city, but I believe there's fifteen or so or twenty of those to do work inside your house. But I got news for you, uh, finding anybody in any trade is difficult, whether there's fifteen or they're, you know, they're all busy. I mean, I, I'm assuming that the fifteen that are available aren't saying no because they don't want the business. They probably got it because they've got nine months worth of business already stacked up. But that's, that's like I said, that's a Craig thing.
Hey, any other questions for Rob? Okay, thank you, Rob.
Okay, thanks.
And now we have a uh special moment. Uh, Mayor, you wanna pick over or chief?
If my name's Tom, I'm gonna introduce him there at a certain point.
Okay, I didn't realize how you guys are.
Well, we scripted it.
Yeah.
My, my assistant, Hannah Miller, will turn it, will hand out a ladder. I wrote up a uh, a letter, it'd be self-explanatory, but I thought it'd be easier if I actually typed it up for you. Uh, I felt there's some wrapping and straight on here.
We're not accepting you.
Thanks for everybody turning out. In person, live, live people, it's like the old days. So, uh Well, thanks, gentlemen. On April twenty-fourth, uh, I gave my notice of intent to retire of public service after forty-two years at, at the close of business on May nineteenth. Um, after my appointment here in Hudson uh ten years ago. Accordingly, this will be my last presentation to our city council. I'm proud of the last decade I attended nearly all of the hundred and twenty or so committee meetings, I believe, I missed two, maybe three. Uh, from the beginning, I routinely deliver statistics and highlighted important events that have impacted our city as well as your police department. I believe the transparency has kept the public informed and is better equipped, our council, to address the changing needs and concerns of our city. Uh, we all have been through a lot in the last ten years. We moved our station after a hundred years on Warren Street. We lost Bill Ridley. We had lively debates about SWAT and use of force and police reform, ICE and sanctuary city, drug raids. Uh, we even came through a rough and violent two thousand seventeen together as well as a pandemic. We also dealt with frozen mannequins, bears, maybe that, well, now should worldwide news that mannequin did. And then the bears and occasional, we were moved to come through town. Uh, through all your officers remain faithful to the duty, answering their calls and working those extra hours as it's all demanded. The complete police commissioner and mayor have informed me that Lieutenant Ashonda Franklin will be taking over as your new chief. I have full trust and confidence that Ashonda will complete her duties with utmost integrity with a passion for the well-being of our citizens and our officers. Uh, many here know that she is a product of this city and can personally attest to her intelligence, her integrity and kindness. All attributes that will serve her well in her new position. She will succeed, she will succeed in making this department even better. So I think the mayor wants to say words and she's waiting patiently over there at my, my, my interviewers, our new chiefs.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, thank the chief here at the council meeting for his service over the past decade. Um, you know, I'm excited to issue in a new era of Ashonda. You know, coming after the chief, um, she's learned a lot in the past decade. Um, so I know I'm gonna give a full speech at her swearing in, which is on the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Nine AM.
Nine AM. I'll say some more good things about the chief, uh, his walking out ceremony, uh, which is
Nineteenth, noon, high noon. They're walking me to the edge of town.
Yeah, so I want us to welcome, you know, my incoming chief, Ashonda Franklin.
I didn't, I didn't come here tonight to uh speak. I have a lot more to say about this appointment on the twenty-second. It's a little bittersweet. I'll just thank the chief for his tenure and all of the leadership skills that he's passed on to me and other members of the department. I'm humbled and honored to be able to step in his footsteps and thank the mayor for this privilege as well. So, and thank you for having me.
So, uh, if you bear with me, uh, and I thank the mayor. Uh, I think it's a good idea to give our council basically a state of the department report. I cannot obviously be fully objective, but I do submit this letter to you guys for your review. Things first, the first uh reportedly underperformance. Um, it was my hope back in two thousand thirteen that we could create a sus- sustained, highly visible foot patrol. While foot hour patrol hours have increased, you're still not at the level that I think the public would fully appreciate. Our data shows that the foot patrol doesn't necessarily prevent crime dramatically. For example, during two shootings, in Saginaw and Twang, our foot patrols are actively patrolling just a few yards from the shooting incidents. Recently, foot patrols ran the area close by when shot the pirate on Columbia Street and when the baker's window was shot out in the center. However, I acknowledge that foot patrols enhance the person-to-person relationships with our citizens as well as addressing minor issues of quality of life. Secondly, the department maintains grant funded uh to fund body armor replacement, targeted traffic enforcement and child seat programs. The federal grant we achieved to purchase our body cameras was relatively small. But the application reporting process, along with the bureaucratic red tape, soured me to the applying, applying for federal grants over the last couple of years. So with the cost of everything rising, I think we need a better future effort than I provided. Also was my goal, this is a favor I ask of you, it was my goal to create a memorial garden in front of the station. We have approved our architectural plans and a list of material and labor needed. I had raised some money, but not nearly enough. In my role as a new, uh, my new role as a private citizen, I'll have more latitude to uh secure grant money and donations. So I asked the common council to allow me to carry on with proper accountability and communication to see this project due completion. I'd like to uh, uh, talk about some of the accomplishments that I perceive as accomplishments that we've done in the last ten years. We, this is the longest report I've done. We uh, we facilitated the move to seven oh one union. This was a multi-passionate effort with radios, communication, property, evidence and computers, all that. We created a modern facility, just much safer for officers and civilians alike. Repentance or video recorded the entire time uh on our property. Our equipment is in good order, everybody. We have newer and more well-maintained vehicles, firearms, body armors and body cams. Uh, we kept our accreditation rating. HPD reorganized barcoded and modernized property and evidence cataloging has flourished to highest standard. And we were acknowledged by New York State inspectors. This included remodeling our Strawberry Alley uh record storage facility, ported up DTW. We obtained body cameras and purchased them with grant money, the first time, uh, first, uh, full-time agency in the area to do so. We supplemented equipment needs, including cars by utilizing asset forfeiture. Uh, four of our current police vehicles were acquired through asset forfeiture. Our participation in DEA federal task force has already returned thousands of dollars to our budget with a possibility of substantial future uh forfeitures. Our detective unit was buttressed by adding additional detectives. We introduced the civil service promotion promotional standards to the process to achieve the most qualified candidates. The unit has an impressive record of clearing serious cases. No cases, and I emphasize zero, were dismissed due to the mishandling of evidence, technicalities or mismanagement of investigations. We enjoy the highest level of daily communication and professional partnership with DA's office. I'm pleased to say that the number of use of force incidents resulting in injury to a defendant as well as lawsuits has declined to one or zero over the past recent years. Uh, regarding the workforce conduct, I have documented fewer and fewer complaints from citizens regarding officer conduct or uh service complaints. I just want to break from this for a minute. To give you a quick story, um, we have body cameras, of course. And on the occasion that I get a service uh complaint, I've actually had the complaint come into my office and queue up the body camera without ever having previewed it and play it, uh, if they accuse the officer of being rude or rough or something like that, we'll play the body camera, you know, without review and in every instant, of course, the story given to me, the complaint wasn't exactly factual. So that's the kind of level of trust and confidence that we have in, in the young officers. We have a strong partnership with other law enforcement agencies. HPD has reinforced working relationships with the sheriff's department, the troopers and local agencies. We have numerous examples of utilizing local agency teams to address crime, training and emergency preparedness. The DEA legit- recognized the legitimacy of HPD and accepted membership into a regional, regional task force. The troopers reor- uh recognized HPD with an award following uh, uh, stone guns. I'm pleased to say they were able to expand bicycle patrols to fourteen current trained members. We actually sponsored a bike school here in Hudson for other law enforcement agencies. We have recognized the importance of engagement with the public and have maintained steady stream with interns and rivalongs. We fully support Anthony Piro's very professional criminal justice program over at Westar. We were at the ground level development of the pre-employment program with Professor Bill Toluca and Lundy Green. HPD sits on the board of directors. Local service, long-term term theater programs for our department and other agencies. Over the past ten years, HPD's BBA has given unprecedented support to youth sports programs, educational scholarships, holiday gifts and donations for the needy, to include the elderly and infirm. The money raises to pass many local charity organizations. Now I look to the future, and this is just my two cents. Uh, I'm very pleased that the common council has taken up the parking bureau issue. A clearly defined parking bureau that offers better service to our public. HPD must not be in a position of writing tickets and then receiving fine payments or even adjudicating tickets. The city needs a park, a parking bureau's head, an adjudication clerk and their own compartmentalized separate budget. HPD should have a say in the parking officer's safety and performance only. Taking into account in uh public safety and quality of life issues, uh continued progress on the truck route should continue by employing the efforts of Margaret and the county supervisors, uh, especially with her facilitating technical communications between parties. Al Russo, elected officials, DOT. I'm concerned about the business of the Old Town Country and the flow of uh trucks to and from that twenty-four hour business. Uh, it'll have a definite attack up, impact on Lower Columbia Street. Uh, the council should look to remove the twenty-six officer cap, which is in uh code nineteen fourteen. Looking to the future, new larger housing developments will create a corresponding increase for service, or for service. They'll require more officers to answer calls. HPD has averaged seven thousand two hundred eighty-six calls per year over the last ten years with no severe fluctuations. This is a baseline number that we should monitor. We should look to lift the residency requirement, twenty mile residency requirement too, so we don't limit our already shrinking candidate pool. It's been suggested over the years to eliminate or modify the position of police commissioner. Currently, code nineteen-two empowers the commissioner as the head of the department. Code nineteen nineteen defines the commissioner as having supervision and control of the department. Meanwhile, code nineteen sixteen makes it the duty of the chief of police to simply overkeep the bookkeeping of the department. Our current commissioner engages in fifteen to twenty hours a week, plus weekends for this duty and he is unpaid, and it's unfair. This fabricated command structure serves to confuse our officers. I would suggest narrowing the police commissioner's duties to a role as final arbiter of the disciplinary product of actions. This way, our citizens, through an elected official, the mayor, will have input regarding officer conduct, the biggest issue in the forefront today. Leave the administration the job to a paid police professional. The big ticket item in the, in the near future is replacement of our police reporting system. And I tell you folks, it's a big one. It's a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this reporting system is the backbone of the department. It records our blotter, evidence, photographs, defendant information, warrant information. Our current system has been in place since two thousand three and it's about three lifetimes running on our computer system. Uh, we have already been researching replacement systems and outside funding. The council should note this as a very important tool. Lastly, finally, for all you I believe that um, I've kept my vow uh to be non-politically my conduct. I've never applied uh, like uh duty, I've never applied my duty to the city based on a person's belief structures, their wealth, or their uh political opinion or their influence. I was not a big believer in photo op policing. Community engagement and positive publicity is important, but not in my opinion, at the basis of a really good department. The young officers that comprise our department are honest, are intelligent, patient and trustworthy. In the one hundred and eighty years since police forces emerged in our country, it can be argued that the last two or three years have been the most trying and difficult for law enforcement. Our HPD members kept their heads up and their heads in the game. They delivered vital service without wavering. This core integrity will ultimately win the day and gain the trust of our citizens and voters. Finally, I would like to express my deepest and sincere appreciation to you, our city council and our mayor, as well as the elected officials that I have served with. We have not always agreed on everything, and this has led to spirited and debates and discussions. But I acknowledge that all of you have done more than most citizens. You have given your time and energy, put yourself in the spotlight. You've opened yourselves to criticisms from social media's pipsqueaks who have zero sweat equity in this city. I commend you all on your efforts. I commend you all on your efforts. Through it all, all of you and the councils before me have treated me with respect and decency. For that, I thank you. Challenging moments that we all engage in as part of the democratic process. It has been my honor and pleasure to serve everybody in this city respectfully submitted civilian, any more.
Yes, sir. So I know you're a beach guy. The guy's like, I got your little beach coat from Hudson, very nice. A little beach hat. For your little Hudson, I don't wanna get sunburned. Bear has maybe not with your pair of skin, my friend. Don't forget your Hudson t-shirt, very nice.
Absolutely.
And then I go for fifty dollars because I can't accept. And I know you're a coffee guy. So you got your little coffee, very nice, very nice dish. There you go. I appreciate it. And I got some.
That's, that's.
Not until you retire. All right. Yeah, so I know, I think, I hope you take a block if you don't.
Yeah, you're blocking Hudson's block.
What is it? It's a, it's a Hudson towel for golfing.
Oh, for golf, yes, I do golf.
After we wanna call that I do get up. So I wanna thank everyone very much and thank you for leaving a department in wonderful shape. And I look forward to where it's next.
Well, I thank you. I'll leave this here. I'll pick that up in a minute. And I'll tell you, this department's really good. They're good young people and this department will be in good hands. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. We're not gonna picture. Anyway, moving right along, we have a resolution. And a couple of local laws to introduce. First resolution. I have an introduction, second to mine. Ryan and Arthur. The one, the ones in the. Second, twelve month. The next one designates June twenty twenty-three is LGBTQ plus pride month in the city. Amber and Margaret. The next resolution accepts a donation to the senior center of four hundred and seventeen dollars. Introduction is second. Amber and. The one.
This is four seventy-one here.
Which one is?
Heather, do you know if it's four seventeen or four seventy-one?
Oh, we have a Campbell. Heather, are you there? There. Well, we can, we can, we could really manage this point. Okay, now the last one, I reintroduced the Canvas resolution. It might, we might not go, well, we get an introduction and second one is first. Amber and, okay, I reintroduced it related from last time because unfortunately we were without Michael tragically. But he's here now. Can explain it a little better. This may not be the resolution we go forward with. Explain.
Sure. So Canvas is a company that creates furniture that is, that reuses wind turbine parts. I, I believe I sent along some images of what the furniture looks like. I think it would be really interesting to include with our Charles Moniz Park project and it is free of charge to the city. The arrangement that they initially proposed to us was that Canvas would go out and do fundraising in order to give a donation to the city, a cash donation to the city, to then order the products. However, since they provided the campaign agreement, and that's what this resolution is for, the, since they provided this campaign agreement to me, they came back and said that they would also be fine with doing a straight in-kind donation of the products rather than going through the campaign and having money transfer between us in order to do that. So we could proceed with the resolution as is. However, I did also wanna offer it to the council. If you prefer to move forward to accept the furniture donation as an in-kind donation, we can rejigger this resolution so that it is in that arrangement rather than.
It's less complicated.
Yeah.
I rather. What kind of furniture are we looking?
It is a specific set that they provide as a welcome package for municipalities. It's a combination of benches and planters. Yeah, so I think it'll, it'll, we'll be able to mix and match and put it where we can pull or best, we could even install it in if we find that it's too much for Charles Moniz to put it elsewhere as well.
That would be great.
Yeah, I looked at their design. They're pretty good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, it also provides, they'll provide a website for the pieces as well. So we could, you can like scan a code and learn more about wind turbines and it's an educational opportunity. And then I had thought that it would be best to choose the, the finishing that allows for people to paint and do your own designs. We could have a community day around painting the benches and even make it more of a, of a, of a new thing as a community.
And has this been incorporated into the Sparkle Mountains plans?
So furniture is a part of the agreement with, it's not exactly the amount that had been budgeted in the grant agreement with Utopia Foundation, but it is within the scope of work. So I think that it will help us offset some of the costs.
Sure. I was thinking more in terms of like the vision of like, like all the rendering could be specific to a certain theme.
They were, but we, to the extent of the, the, the design that was created, we are engaging with another architect in order to actually create the final brands. So it will look similar, but not exactly as was rendered by the previous consultant. So we actually just met about that today and we'll be moving forward with that as well.
Are there any locations where there locally, meaning like within a hundred miles or so that they've installed these furnitures that we can go and touch maybe?
As far as I know, this is a new program, actually. So we're, we'll be one of the first to receive this.
I did look at the design. I think the design is a little bit old. Do we know since most of the turbines are some, you know, some sort of a metal alloy or whatever. Do we know if there is any sort of like lifespan where they, you know, end up becoming the structural bust bucket the city has to either upkeep or remove? Is there any, anything on the website? I don't remember seeing anything specifically. I think the idea of off-cycling is, is good, but just, just a question.
That's a good question and I can ask them about that.
Oh, Mike, so if they do the donation, that means we're gonna have to come up with a cost installation, making sure that it's secure, correct?
Uh, it's gonna be, yes, but that's, that would feasibly already be a part of what was approved for the Charles Moniz Park project.
Okay, to that. And, and so what, what is the Canvas?
Canvas, yes.
What is their, what is their goal? How are they gonna use Hudson in this fundraising effort? What is, how are they gonna portray us in fundraising?
So if, if we do move forward with them authorizing a campaign to fundraise, we have full control over how they fundraise and to talk about Hudson. They actually ended up lifting some text that was on our website and directly from other campaigns of ours. So there, we have full edit access to it if we do move forward with that. But I, I have a feeling that the council is leaning towards doing an in-kind donation, which would not require us to authorize that to go to.
And you have to change the resolution.
Right, and you have to change the resolution.
I think.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
And the, the big cost for Facebook?
It's included, yes. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, well, oh. Okay, we're gonna introduce local, a number of local laws.
Do you mind doing the one around Kennedy card first? Cause I, I'm full on my. It's past pumpkin and I'm there.
Oh, okay, sure. Not a problem. That's the second one.
Yeah.
First number.
It's the, it's the, it's the last one.
So this is a revision that Crystal and Margaret worked on to revise our our formula retail use law. Can I get an introduction and secondly, Margaret and Arthur? They're reading and be prepared to discuss it further at our next meeting.
Just to highlight for you, this doesn't really change anything fundamental about the current code. It was simply, it came up in discussion over a few months ago that we really need to find a point in time at which the assessment would be made as to whether or not a particular business was going to go beyond the border, et cetera. So I'm trying to try to add in Crystal put in some of this, you know, language to make it, to make it enforceable. So that's what they, that's what I'm about. Now we have to answer more detailed questions when we have time to maybe.
Right, because it has to, it has to stay on the table for. So going back to the first one, that is a doc regulation that Margaret, the chief and Crystal worked on. Can I have an introduction in a second? Margaret again.
I'll say it.
And Arthur. And the last, well, next is the charter update relating to the fire department that we discussed earlier. Can I have an introduction and second? The one. And then the charter amendment for the fire department, the second one we talked about. Thank you, Margaret. Yes, we have an hour. Okay. That is everything that's been released. And we have time for twenty games. I mean, anything you'd like to bring up at this point from the council personnel.
Michael was saying with the silos while I was starting.
Yeah, so the first thing is to establish the public works board and we have three positions that need to be established. One from the council, one council member to serve on that board. And then two community members, one that's appointed by the council and one that's appointed by the mayor. So we have to find those people and set up the first meeting so that we can establish work, so it's about working on a staff. The other element is that Peter Gugiano is putting together the RFP for unit pricing to have an idea how much it will cost to actually do the repairs and all that. So those who think are sort of happening.
Are you planning to advertise it in our website about it to the community members?
That's a good idea. We should, yes.
Other questions from councilmen or their business, anything you'd like to discuss?
I dominate. Um, I don't think, Mike, but I'm wondering, cause I understand there was some information about the senior center doing a fundraiser. Do you know anything about that? And I was gonna ask Mia, Mia, but she wasn't here.
Yeah.
Do you have any other information?
No, no, the information came from, and such that they were doing the fundraiser on behalf of the city. So I had to make sure that wasn't written.
I'm not aware of that, but I can definitely follow up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right, and public, anyone have any questions? Or comments they'd like to make? Looking at the board, I see no one with a hand raised. Ryan, yes, go on, and Arthur. Others, please sit by me, say hi.
Hi.
Anyone have votes? Okay, thank you.
Well, I was actually definitely late. All right, so that's the.